All to order this meeting in the King George County Board of Supervisors. We will open with an invocation and Mr. Miller will lead us in the pledge. So if everyone could please rise. Thank you. We will open with public comment then, and comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing, and if you do give public comment, please give your name and your address beforehand. Is anyone here for public comment? Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Did anyone receive correspondence to be entered into the record? Okay. In that case, I will close public comments and we'll move on to capital planning analysis. Kyle Lau, Devon.
Right. Mr. Chair, members of the board, nice to see you as always this evening. I've got a handout and I think we've got it on the screen there too, so I'll hand these out real quick. So as those books go around, I'll kind of talk off the screen, but what we were asked to do tonight is to update some of the capital planning for the general fund. When I say general fund, meaning general government and schools, as you work your way through the budget process, through the capital planning process, and just kind of give an update and a review based on the latest information we have. So that's what we have this evening and happy to answer questions as we move along. I think the idea is to give some information, some overview, and I think what you'll find is it's a positive story, always some nuances as the world changes, but hopefully some good information as you're deliberating the capital investments of the county. So in terms of an overview, the focus tonight for the moment is really on some near-term projects. We know, and you know, there's a couple that have been on the immediate sort of radar, the front burner in terms of major capital investment by the county, at least as they've been given to us, and those are at the top of the screen there. A fire station in and around 14 million, and a preschool, the number we've been using is 28 million for the moment. So in total, about $42 million, plus or minus. I would say for a little bit of perspective, if you looked back when we did this last year, we were talking about a fire station, really that was at seven and a half million at the time. We kind of bumped it up to 10 to give us some contingency. And so as we look at all these numbers, we always kind of have in the back of our head, not that we're hoping for projects to get more expensive, but it's just kind of the nature of the way the world is. So what is not in here, but is always sort of at the forefront of how we think of things, is making sure we keep those very strong fund balances so that as you're making investments, as we're getting surprises, we have some of those reserves and contingency kind of built into the overall operations of the county. So I'll just offer that as a little bit of perspective. You're not alone in that situation and that things are just costing more. So we were working with about 42 million. We know there's some discussion maybe of a fourth elementary school. For the moment, we've run these two numbers to give you some perspective. We can always update this as more information is available. We'll talk about some specific things the state's doing on school funding too, that I think will be helpful. We know there's a variety of other capital projects and you have that all kind of outlined on your larger spreadsheet from the county. Again, what we've tried to do here is maybe take a little bit of order of magnitude, the focus being those two larger projects, and we've built in for the moment, just an ongoing cash funding component of, call it the smaller, more routine things in the CIP. So what you'll see up here may not match exactly what's in your spreadsheet, but it'll give you some perspective of kind of how we're thinking about things in terms of tying it to what is on your spreadsheet. Bottom of the page, we're always thinking about two concepts, debt affordability, which is really the cash flow, how do we pay for the things within the budget? The second concept is debt capacity. And so debt capacity is how do we make sure that if we do borrow money, we're doing so and it's in line with our policies, it's in line with best practices, and we can go say to the rating agencies, banks and lenders, hey, we're doing this in a responsible way. So two different concepts, both important and both related to capital funding, and both things the county's done a good job of managing historically. In terms of interest rates, just a little brief update, this has been in the news a lot. Long story short, borrowing rates are higher than they were during the all-time lows of the pandemic, but from a historical perspective, they're still in very good shape. You can see that on that graph on the left-hand side. We're probably in and around maybe 4% plus or minus, maybe up to 5% if we as a county were going to go borrow for about a 20-year time period in the public markets. So we've estimated a higher rate than that. We like to play on the conservative side, but just as you're kind of thinking about things, reading the news, et cetera, long-term borrowing rates, still historically very favorable, just higher than they were during the really abnormal all-time lows of the pandemic. Our existing county debt service, so before we go add anything new, what do we start with? You see that picture here, kind of broken up there a little bit on the page, but about $100 million, it's paid in roughly equal increments. We have a little bit of a ramp up between 24 and 25 as some of the radio and the courthouse financing from last year kind of ramps up in terms of the payments. That's all baked in when we talk about cash flow and affordability in the next couple pages. Importantly for the public, all of the debt is fixed rate. So as rates move in the market and maybe as you hear about the Federal Reserve increasing interest rates, that's not impacting our existing debt. We are, just like a fixed rate mortgage that you might have in your personal life, our rates are set so they're not moving unless we want to as a county go change them and maybe refinance them. We don't see that right now on the market, but certainly we watch it. The other important point here is historically, our existing tax-supported debt has been paid primarily from landfill revenues, as you recall, from the courthouse financing really. Those are basically tapped out, and so we're getting a transfer now from the general fund to help support that. And the board, you've done a very good job of sort of making sure that's sustainable and we can show that to outside lenders and investors. Two important policies that the county has as we think about the potential of borrowing more dollars, these are the two policies that we want to make sure we are in compliance with because they are what demonstrate to the rating agencies and outside lenders that we're in good shape and should maintain or hopefully even push up our existing credit ratings. Debt versus assessed value, we'll see those graphs in here. We want that to not exceed 3.5%. We'll show you a visual what that means. And then debt service to expenditures, which is arguably the more important of those two, just how many pennies out of every dollar in the budget are going to make a debt service payment? We have a policy as a county that says we don't any more than 10 to 12 pennies out of every dollar in the budget to go make a debt service payment. So you'll see visually when you start layering these things in what that looks like. So we've run two scenarios, and those are highlighted in the middle of the page there in the kind of green and orange colored box, and it's yellow. The first scenario just looks at doing the, we call it a fire and rescue facility, but really fire station. So if all we did was that, about $14 million is what we've assumed, what does that look like? What's that do to our affordability? What's it do to our capacity? The second scenario is what if we did both the fire station and the preschool, a total of $42 million? Again, what does that do to our both capacity and affordability? You're a member of a regional jail, so we kind of have that all factored in, working with Donna. The bottom of the page here is important because what we want to make sure is while we're making these potential large, multi-generational improvements in terms of fire stations, buildings, et cetera, we also want to make sure we've got a set aside for the routine annual stuff in terms of capital that you need to do every single year. Doesn't get as many headlines. That might be school buses, might be sheriff's vehicles, might be paving, might be roofs, those kind of things that while they're technically capital, you end up just needing those dollars every single year. We've plugged in $2 million a year as an annual set aside to make sure we've got at least $2 million a year to do that cash funded capital. It's a healthy thing. We don't want to borrow for everything. We want to save our borrowing capacity for the big stuff, but also make sure that you're able to maintain and keep up with the necessary things that maybe don't get as sort of big headlines. So we've made some assumptions in here. This can all be changed and amended, but just very high level. For the borrowing that is done, we've planned on an interest rate of 5%. That's just a planning estimate. I think that's above where we would be if we went and did this tomorrow in the marketplace. We always like to err a little bit on the conservative side. We'll talk at the end on the school specifically. We've seen the state put a bunch of new dollars into grants and some low-interest state loans called literary loans. When we've run these numbers, we've not assumed any of those either grants or low-interest loans. So if we were to, and we'll talk about this at the end, go after some of those dollars from the state, it would just make all of this look better. Purposely didn't want to assume that. It's a competitive process, but I just want to point that out as we talk about sort of how it's funded. We've started with a more conservative way of thinking about it, but there are some opportunities out there from the state to the extent the board with the schools want to move forward with that. We've assumed in terms of financing need that the fire station maybe is needed a little bit sooner in terms of the dollars. Preschool, maybe a little bit later. That's not for us to say. It's really kind of tied into how quickly you're able to design the things and get to construction, et cetera, but that's just what we've assumed. And we're assuming for the moment about a 25-year amortization for the project. So they're long-life projects, they're going to be around for multiple generations. We've assumed it gets paid off over 25 years. Again, very much like a residential mortgage, making annual principal payments. A couple other assumptions, they're important, and then we'll get to the meat of it, but I think it's important we kind of recognize some of these things that are built in. We've assumed $7.6 million of those landfill host fees. It's been a great financial boon to the county for multiple decades at this point. We've assumed we have those until 2040, and then they fall off. And we've assumed just 7.6 million. It was higher for a couple of years for a couple of different reasons, pandemic, a fire, another landfill, et cetera. I think we're in and around that 7.6 million for the moment, and Donna can tell me if we're hopefully in the right range there in terms of the host fee. Second bullet point there, we are now getting that transfer from the general fund of about 2.8 million. So that is a new source of funding for the capital by virtue of last year's budget. We know this year's budget was a challenge. It was for a lot of local governments dealing with the state inflation and other things. So we've got that 2.8 million. We're counting on that 2.8 million every single year from here on out. So that's between those two recurring funding sources, 7.6 in the landfill and the 2.8 million from the general fund, that's all baked into the base of what we're assuming from here on out. Last very important bullet point here is the capital reserve fund in the capital fund, starting with $7.6 million. So that capital fund has historically been very strong. It's there for a reason. It helps us to kind of manage our way through the peaks and valleys of capital funding, whether it's debt service or whether it's cash funded. Keeping a very strong balance there has sort of allowed us, meaning us globally as King George County, again, to kind of manage through some of the higher years of capital and the lower years gives us a buffer there. So it's important that we make sure we acknowledge that. Getting to what the debt service would sort of picture, if you will, would look like when we incorporate both the fire and rescue and the preschool side of things, you can see that visually on the page there if you're a visual person. The dark green in that graph is our existing debt service. It's that same numbers we looked at a couple of pages ago. That's already baked into the cake. That's all the existing projects that we have. The light green is the fire and rescue side of things. You take your eye to the column B in the table there, that annual payment amounts to about, you know, plus or minus $900,000 a year. So we've started to build that in to our thinking with a little bit of a ramp up period, but that would plus or minus with these planning estimates, it'd be about $900,000 a year for that fire station. Then you take your eye to the next column over, the preschool at 28 million, no coincidence, is basically double that number by virtue of us using a $28 million value there for the project. And so what happens is our existing debt service goes from about $7.6 million in 2024 up to, you know, about 10 and a half or thereabouts over the next couple of years. So, you know, we'd have about, you know, $3 million to kind of incrementally work our way up, but we could do that over a couple of years. And again, that capital reserve fund is important because it helps to kind of buffer some of that in terms of the peaks. So this page is a summary, and then I want to show you a couple of just graphs so you can visually kind of take this in. We want to encapsulate on just one page, some of the critical pieces of the analysis here between the first and second scenario. So first scenario is fire station only, again, a higher than current market rate. If you take your eye down, see if the laser pointer works. There we go. I don't know if you can see that, but... So what we've done here in this cumulative real estate tax equivalent impact, it's kind of a mouthful, but what we've done there is to the extent that as we run these numbers, we see a need for additional revenue, we've equated that additional revenue to the real estate tax rate. And that's something that I think all of you on the board, we've done that a bunch of times with thinking about the middle school and the courthouse and the radio, et cetera. It does not mean that your only source of revenue is a real estate tax rate, but it's one that is most directly within your control. So what we see is that in the scenario where we have the fire station only, we see the equivalent need for about two pennies, but we don't really see that need until the 2030 and 2031 time period. So we'll show you all the cash flows in the last couple of pages. I think what that tells us is it's reasonable to be thinking about needing to come up with some more revenue to take care of some of these things, but we don't need it in 2024. We know that budget's done. We don't think we really need it in 2025. So we've got a couple of years to be thinking about how that all comes together. So there's some evolution there that can occur. If you take your eye over to scenario two, we do both the fire station and the preschool, make sure I say that correctly, we do see the need for the equivalent of about six pennies. And I'll show you what that means in dollars because I think the dollars here are also important. We see it coming on a little bit sooner, so as early as 2026, we'd need the equivalent of about two pennies. So again, not in '24, not in '25. I think about maybe in '26, we'd need to be having some more recurring dollars flow through, and then it works in about two penny increments each and every year. So again, importantly, especially as we're talking about the preschool, that all assumes a 5% interest rate and no grant funding. So the extent we can get a, what's called a literary loan, we'll talk about at the end, that takes that 5% down to probably 3%, that'll make a pretty material difference. And if we're able to apply for a grant, you can get up to 30% of the project costs via this new grant program. I think it's more reasonable to maybe thinking about 20% just because the 30% tends to go to the most at-risk local governments, which you're not going to, I don't think qualifies as a at-risk, but it's substantial dollars. So all of that would make this picture just look incrementally better. I don't think that means the need for recurring revenues goes away, but it definitely gets better and probably gives us another year or two to be thinking about when we need to come up with those dollars. So I would argue this is the most conservative or more conservative case to start with as you're thinking about both of these projects. So I'll take you through a couple of pages of cash flows. I'll go quickly over this page. This is just taking again our existing debt service and layering on the fire station by itself. So we talked about our debt policies and making sure we can continue to demonstrate to the rating agencies and other lenders that were carrying a responsible and reasonable level of outstanding debt. And so that's what these two graphs are showing here. Left-hand side is debt service to expenditures. We have a policy to be in the 10 to 12% range. That's that yellow line and red line, we want to be below that. The dark blue bars down here is our existing debt service. Kind of yellow top to it is if indeed we added the fire station to 14 million, that's about the impact it has on that particular policy. So we're still fine with that policy. We've got some capacity. The same with the other policy there in terms of debt to assessed value. So this page is a whole bunch of numbers, but I'll walk through just quickly what exactly it's showing you. We call this a penny impact analysis. This is getting back to that concept of if we need to come up with more recurring revenues and the only place we have to get it is a real estate tax rate, which we know isn't the case, what does that look like in terms of the timing and the dollars? So all this page is doing is adding together between A, B, and C, what our annual debt service is, comparing that to the revenues we have, which is our landfill and that transfer from the general fund, and then doing the math and saying, all right, do we have enough revenue or do we need some more revenue? And so again, we see this, if all we do is a fire station, we see this being in pretty good shape until we get out to about 2030, 2031. It's a long ways away. We always like to be thinking multiple years out there that we might need the equivalent of about two pennies. What that really means in dollars is about $800,000. Every penny is about $400,000. So if you want to put the concept of pennies to the side for the moment, it really means we need about $800,000 a year, but not really starting until about the end of the decade. That all flows through into another page with a bunch of numbers. What this is showing is the capital reserve fund, and we start at about 7.9, actually we started about 7.6 million over here. And this is where I was talking about earlier, where this capital reserve fund helps us to kind of absorb the peaks and valleys. And so if you watch the ending balances over on this side of the page, you watch that trend, it stays pretty solid and kind of starts to drop off out here. And so what we're solving for is to make sure, when we put those two pennies in there, make sure this capital reserve fund is always positive. Make sure we don't ever, you know, simply stated, make sure we don't run out of money in that capital reserve fund. We'd really like it to stay at a level higher than this, but we'll be able to kind of evolve in that as we do through multiple iterations. And the other point is that you see it drop and it starts to pick back up out here when some of your other existing debt falls off. So that's kind of how we're thinking about the timing of if we need additional revenues, where that timing hits, is making sure we are always in good shape with that capital reserve fund. So then we flip to the second scenario. So we have both fire station and preschool, and you can see the payments there, again, going from where we are now, about seven and a half, going up to about, you know, 11 million plus or minus in that range, but doing so over a couple of years. So we have this '25, '26, '27, '28 time period to kind of build into that cycle. I would also say that the way the payments are structured for purposes of this discussion, pretty simple, as we get a little more refined, there's probably some additional things we can do to kind of shape this into your existing debt service. So we're kind of, we're pretty high level at the moment. I think there's some ways we can make this look even a little bit better in another iteration. Then we go to our policies, again, with the fire station and the preschool. If we're measuring debt service to expenditures, wanting to make sure we're below that gold 10% bar, we stay below it. We get to about 9%. So our margin, our cushion there starts to get smaller, but again, the policy really is to be anywhere in between 10 to 12%. So we're in compliance. We start to bump up against the lower level, but a lot of things will change over that time period. So we're watching it, want to be mindful of it, but you're very much within the policy level there. Same for debt for assessed value, kind of pops up a little bit quicker, but then it falls off largely by virtue of the fact that each and every year, we're paying off principal of our existing debt. So that overall debt load, even if we're adding some projects, we're also paying some debt off at the same time. So that gets us to, again, this page, we call it the penny page, with all the different cash flows and numbers, same concept. What you see is that the need for additional revenue, which shows up in this column H, starts to happen sooner, again, because we've taken on the $14 million fire station plus a $28 million preschool. So beginning in about '26, this is FY '26 right here, we need about $800,000. So that two pennies, again, about $800,000. The next year, we need another $800,000 in the third year. So you build up to needing about 2.4 million over a couple of years to, again, make sure that the CIP is sustainable, cash flows, both the debt service and the cash funded component of it. That again is shown in terms of the capital reserve fund. We start at the same 7.6 million, and it does kind of get spent down here over, you know, basically a decade or thereabouts. We've got some time to be watching that, but again, wanting to make sure that's always positive. And so that's kind of the thought process behind where those pennies come in and when. So our thoughts in terms of time schedule, and obviously our time schedule is your time schedule in terms of the county as a whole, but presenting here this evening, we can change, tweak, amend anything here if there's different values, a new cost estimates, that's always, you know, something that we can or are happy to change. that's always, you know, something that we can or are happy to change. But as we put here, summer into fall, what I think we see happening, and others can correct me, is on the fire station side, continuing with that design and development side of things, we understand at least that's a critical priority. That's for you to say, not us. And so we've got that in our mind in terms of maybe an immediate funding need. But I'll talk for a second, this bullet point here, actually a third bullet point, on that school funding side of things. So just over the last couple of months, there's like two programs that have technically been around for a while, but with the prior year's budget, the state put a bunch of new dollars into it. The first program was called literary loans, which we as a county have had going back into, even when we did the high school, there were some literary loans involved, and I think Sealston did as well. What it basically is, is a loan from the state at an interest rate that is set by your composite index. And it's a fixed rate loan. You can pay it over 20 to 30 years. So you would be a 3%, I believe. So we've planned on 5% in here. If we were able to qualify for one of those literary loans, we'd be a 3%. So you get a very substantial interest rate advantage if we're able to qualify. What the state has done when they revamped the program is they made it a competitive process. In the old days, you used to be able to apply, you get on a waiting list, and kind of when the state got around to funding you, that's when you got your lip loan. Nowadays, they've made it a quote-unquote competitive process where they've said they've tried to target more at neat, more at risk, more needy places in terms of local governments. But there's been a fair amount of local governments, like a King George, with similar demographics, similar composite index, that have been getting that kind of funding. What we've heard is that the next round of that could be coming out as early as, call it late summer, though we don't know anything specific yet. That's kind of what we're hearing. So that's one program that would make all this look a little bit better. And there's a timing element to that, too. Again, because they've got a very set application time period, and it's a competitive process. The second program is a grant that is very much new. There was 450 million in this fiscal year. So we understand that there's going to be 450 million in next fiscal year. So it's some fairly substantial dollars. That's where you can qualify for up to 30% of a project cost and probably realistic to be thinking about more like a 20% project cost for us here in King George. That's also competitive process. There's a whole scoring system that you can go look at. We've got a little model built to kind of try and test a little bit to see on a specific project, maybe where we would score. There's a certain point minimum, you have to get 65 points to qualify. And so our thought here with, you know, sort of the board's blessing, it's all, it's all your decision with everybody else here, there really doesn't seem to be any downside if indeed there is a school that's a priority to be thinking about trying to apply for those dollars. And again, that's not for us to say the school is or isn't a priority. That's sort of above our pay grade, so to speak. But to the extent it is a priority, there are some programs out there that it is worth taking a look at in terms of application. So that's really our next steps. I'll pause there. Any questions, thoughts, comments, anything? I don't know, Chris, you want to add or?
I think the, the one thing I'd point out is that in the proposed budget, operating budget, I think we pointed this out, that there was $430,000 set aside for the debt on the fire station. And so that's, so it's just a matter of going forward with that process. So that's not, so when you see that project up there, it didn't mean that it's not funded. It just means that it's, it's one of your big projects that you're going to be dealing with. But we do have the ability to cover that debt service.
Thank you, Mr. Lau. I really appreciate the brief, as always. Did anyone have any questions? I imagine Mr. Lau will stick around.
Stick around, yes, sir.
Ms. Bender.
Just a quick question. Our existing debt is, do you know off the top of the head which building is it still for? That we still, it's probably Sealston, the high school, the sheriff's office?
Courthouse, radio, middle school. That's the off the top of my head. And I can't, I can't promise that's a comprehensive list. I could go figure it out, but.
Maybe the library.
Library.
Library would be in there, that's right.
So some of those might, you know, are going to come off, like Sealston as longer?
Yeah, yeah, and that's all, sorry, I'm going fast here. But yeah, so as you look at, yeah, and we've taken that debt rolling off into account and we've done the other bond issues. So by all means, certain of those loans will pay off. What you see in that dark green there is we've kind of largely taken a lot of that into account.
Right, and some of those projects are things that are long, like 50 years or more buildings. So they're, yep, thank you.
So in our time schedule, it says summer, fall. County goes design and planning of the fire and rescue facilities. Then the preschool, we've been kicking down the road for 30 years. Why can't we put that in there so we can start the process of the financing? And all those things that you mentioned, in all, in every which way, I would imagine that the rate will not get better. So I think it's, it'd be prudent to strike.
So I imagine at the end of the day, that would be at the will of the board. This is, this is a recommendation based just on, or maybe not recommendation, but just a view from the information you had.
Yeah, that's right. But yes, you're. Kind of a high level, we understand, but that is entirely within your purview in terms of the timing of design and all those kind of things.
Yes. Does anyone else have any questions?
Not really a question, Mr. Chair, but a comment. So I'm looking at the application for the literary loan fund. And I think even just for the loan, we may be fairly competitive. One of the questions is, does this project involve any of the following factors contributing to the project being undertaken? A hazardous materials or substance containment or removal or other environmental health factors? B significant building safety issues or structural defects? And that whole building answers A and B. So I feel like we would be foolish, I agree with Mr. Collins, we'd be foolish not to try to take advantage of this when we can. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lau. I will ask if you'll stick around. We might have more questions as we move along.
That would do.
Project review?
So I guess it's time where we get to hear the, what your direction is on this, on some of the projects. I know that we've done some work on the, what you all committed to us, and we've put that all together. And so Ms. Hahn and I will, I guess, take whatever direction you have. I think when, we obviously have a major project that we need to figure out which way you want to go with. I know that Mr. Granger and myself and Ms. Bender met on Wednesday with the architect, along with folks from the school, Dr. Boyd and Mr. Bush, Ms. Hahn. And we reviewed the options in terms of what you might want to consider doing. And I defer to both the chair and Ms. Bender on where they wanted to go on that. So, but I guess we're ready to.
Sure, actually, if we won't mind starting with the schools. I'll start with those big projects, actually. Because as you said, we did, Mr. Miller mentioned, met with Mosley because they had provided the study for the preschool. And speaking with Dr. Boyd and Mr. Bush from the school board, there was concerns because they have other needs as well. So they just kind of want to understand. Have a plan in place that could let us know what would the costs and impacts be for including all of those things in like an a la carte? Like, hey, if you wanted to do the fourth elementary school, or if you wanted to do the new school board office, or if you wanted to do the interconnected road along with any of those other projects. And so obviously, Mosley can't move forward with actually doing it. They were going to put together a proposal that would come back to the board that we could consider if we wanted to have them actually do that evaluation. But obviously, that would require the changing of funds and it might require more funds as well in order to execute that, that analysis and that proposal that they would put together. So I will ask, Dr. Boyd, would you come up as well? I'm just going to ask as well. So I heard Mr. Collins and Ms. Cupca both, at least what I heard, sounded like moving sooner than later with the preschool. I am of the same mind. I know that we did discuss a whole bunch of different ideas for Mosley to look into if that were to be funded to do, including things like, again, a school board office co-located with the preschool. And if we were to move forward with the project now, that might become challenging in that kind of a situation. So would you like to move? I would like to move forward with the preschool this year. I'm going to be honest with you, I really would.
Certainly would I.
Okay. Okay, that might change some of those options a little bit because if we were to, if we were to move forward with it and then starting to get designs and plans put in place and we were not looking at it from an including the school board office kind of perspective, trying to retrofit something on like that where it goes to second floor might be a more challenging situation.
Totally understand. We have a lot of needs.
Yep.
Population continues to grow. That fourth elementary school will be needed at some point. But the most immediate need, if you've ventured into that preschool anytime in the last two decades, it's done.
Yes.
That is our most pressing need.
Okay. Mr. Collins, you had something?
Yes, sir. So the elementary school is not out of my mind at all. I mean, it's in the forefront. But I foresee some large economic development things occurring in the next couple of years. So we can plan for that with some of that new economic development getting ready to happen. So that's, that's why I didn't propose to put it all at once. We get the pressing issue and then it'll give us some time, a little bit of time to regroup and get these economic projects underway. And then there'll be a lot more funds to work with.
Ms. Bender.
My answer, I am totally, since 2019, I've recognized the need and we did that whole infrastructure study. Here's my biggest thing is we need to do it right and not in rushing and not accounting for the school board office as possibly being built on top of that. Because the whole, the whole thing is, in the end, you'd be left for a school board office in a building that's not the best building anymore. So it makes sense to move them together, even if it has to be a second story. So to me, it's being, was it penny wise, pound foolish? I think is the quote of not making sure we're doing it right and then just rushing. I know it's an urgent need, but we need to do it correctly, especially with, even if an economic development project came, it's not going to be the money right away. We're going to have to pay for this a lot sooner. So we need to do it right so we can tell the citizens, we're doing it right, not the old way where we build things not up to capacity. So I want to make sure that at least the study, even the study could be fast-tracked, that we look at the site and do it correctly, including possibly having the school board. Because the school board office has to go somewhere. We're not going to leave it in that old building.
So Ms. Bender, I hear you about the school board building. But so when I think about these type of projects, I think about what I want my wife, children, or significant other in these buildings. So the preschool, I don't want any of my family or any of the people in my district in that building. The school board building, yes, I think it still has life to it until we continue our planning further down the road. But I don't think that we should lump that into that because it still has a lot of life and it's, we have a lot of things to consider there. That's where all the hub of the computer network goes and all these other things to consider when you do build another building. Thank you.
Thank you. I still think that's short-sighted. You've got to plan correctly and you've got to do it the right way. And rushing, and I'm not saying that preschool, I know there is a need that needs to be immediate, but it just doesn't make sense, especially to the taxpayers if we're going to raise rates because even with the economic development project, it's not going to be right away, is we need to show them that we're doing the right thing. I know I keep saying that, but it just doesn't make sense to me to not plan and keeping people in a building that we're actually, if we kept the school board office there, we're going to have to spend money to fix it up because it, for years, you've asked for things for the air conditioning system and that. I mean, if you just look at the building, it just seems to be we're wasting money to rush. And I don't think, based on the chat we had with Mosley, is they could not, it wouldn't be a long process, I think, to add on possibly a second floor for the school board office. I just, rushing and not thinking is silly. And I think it's wasting money.
So I'm not rushing and I'm not wasting money. I'm trying to be frugal with the money that's available, plan for the future, make smart decisions, and keep our tax rate as low as possible. I am the last one that wants to raise taxes on this board. So if you can consider. If I may, it really comes down to, you know, what you're committing to do for this coming fiscal year on the CIP, for this project. If you're committing some resources, you know, you're, let's use the example of 10% to do engineering work on a project. If this thing is 28 million dollars, that's 2.8 million dollars that you're committing to do engineering. If that's what you're doing, you could still slide in what Ms. Bender is talking about. I don't know that that's, it doesn't slow the project down because I don't know that you have 2.8 million to spread towards this project alone. I mean, I think that's what really comes down to, what do you want to do? Do you want to commit to the engineering work this coming year? Or do you want to commit to further study? I'm not hearing you want to really do any further study, but I, I think we have room to do, to accommodate both sides. You're not slowing the project down by addressing what Ms. Bender is talking about, I don't think.
So my only concern would be looking from the analysis Mr. Lau gave us. And you look at the max outstanding debt versus assessed value. And it's, it's about a half a percent increase when you include preschool and it gets you to 3.26%. 3.5 is that bubble line that we don't want to cross. And then if you were to add on a second floor for a school board office at the same time, I don't know exactly where it'll be. I don't know if it'll be double exactly, like 28 million, but I think we're looking at the, I'm sorry, an additional 28 million. But I do think if you look at it, it's about a half, half a percent for that 28 million. And then we only have a quarter percent left, that that would push us over the top. I'll be honest, I don't think we could do, either I think we have to wait a couple of years or I think we do the preschool and then we have to wait a couple of years for some of those other ones. I think, I really think the preschool is an urgent priority that should be moved forward sooner, as soonest, soonest. So that's my take.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Keep us turning off. Can we just see the option of the study to come back? I don't understand why the rush not to see the information. And I think they can get it to as quick as sooner or later, might not be that much. Because I had some, because I'll say the original, and Mr. Granger, you know, the why I wanted to be, talk to Mosley is, I didn't like the survey that was done. They did good work, but I don't think we got all the information we really needed knowing the site from that study. And so that's why, just getting them, I don't think it's a lot of, it'd be very quick to get the information that we want, like the interconnected road and what a second story would be, taking out the elementary school. I don't think it would be that long for them to come back with the information. So why can't, why do we have to make a decision right now, here and now, and not wait maybe a couple of months to make this decision?
May I, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Cupca.
Later in the slides, it says that we have to advertise twice and have a public hearing before June 30th, 2023. That's three weeks. Is that true or not? So when do we have to make a decision on this?
So the public hearing has already been held.
That was with the planning commission, yes.
The planning commission level, right.
The, I was using the slides from last night's meeting and so I guess I didn't delete a couple of the slides at the end. So the public hearing on the preschool has been held. If you want to move forward with a doing, looking at the fourth elementary or the school board office, you would have to have.
It's still, it would have to go back to the planning commission, right? Because that has not been considered in the planning whatsoever.
So if you added those in there, then that would require going back to the planning commission. But if you go forward just with the, with the preschool, then you're not changing, that's already been held, is what Ms. Collins said.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So I guess, Dr. Boyd, I'm maybe one of your biggest advocates for this project, it sounds like. So if we put off what we could do today, that we know that we need to do, given the current economic in the country, and kick the can down the road a couple of weeks, a couple of months, they become 30 years. I mean, I sat here in that chairs out there and watched it happen over and over and over again, kicking it down, this preschool down the road. I, I can guarantee you, there's nobody in this county that wants to keep that preschool. I, I don't know anybody. So I think that, Ms. Bender, first we can go forth with this, get them on the roll and then maybe, you know, work on some of that other stuff right thereafter. And I guess I'll stop my arguments. I've said it probably 15 times and.
I just was going to say, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't do what Mr. Miller suggested, which is commit to putting some dollars towards the engineering just for the preschool because that's really all we can do because that was the nature of the public hearing before the planning commission. That way, we lock in the preschool and we would get some time to get the study back. Nobody is saying no school board, no fourth elementary school, but we don't have enough information to make a good, sound decision about it right now. We do think we have enough information to make a sound decision about plugging in a number for this upcoming fiscal year to start the groundwork to get the ball rolling on at a minimum, a new preschool. So I also agree with Mr. Granger that this number starts looking very scary if we try to do all of them at once. So for that reason, I do agree, I do agree with Mr. Collins.
My last comment is I do totally agree.
The grants as well, I think, need to be seriously looked at. I think that, and I think that the folks at Davenport can certainly work with Dr. Boyd.
So all of it will go on the roll so they can, you know.
But what are the biggest things, something you look at the site? The site is limited because of the wetlands. So making sure that we have, even if you add the other stuff later, we need to make sure it's all cited and it has the possibility to add those things. So that, that is imperative. That's what I'm trying to get at is, that is imperative that work be done because that site has a lot of limitations due to the wetlands. I know that site perfectly because we built a cross-country course all around it. It has a lot of issues, so there's only a couple of sites. So to make sure that we plan it correctly so that in the future we can add on makes sense. And so, I mean, I'm hearing you wrong, but rushing through to do, we got to also, if we're only going to do one part, we got to make sure that the study or something is done so that the, that we can know where in the future these things can be added.
I think that's fair. Mr. Granger, did you want to weigh in?
I'm not big on rushing either. I like to try to get things planned as much as we can, but that preschool has been a disaster for years. And as Mr. Collins says, really, nobody wants it. I mean, it's, it's almost the point of being a hazard in there. I mean, I would be comfortable moving forward just, you know, to lock in numbers and get plans for that and, you know, work on the, the other things later. We do have a lot of things coming along the pike and, you know, that will help out with the monies to pay for all these without raising taxes. So I think if that's the way, I would be leaning.
Okay. Gentlemen? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Boyd, I really appreciate it. So I think I heard a majority wanted to at least move forward with starting the process with the preschool. I guess we'll start looking at the grants and applying for the, the interest rate, the literacy? Literary loan, thank you. Thank you. And we can start doing those things.
And then what we can also do, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what we can also do is we can look at whatever available funding that you could commit on top of the existing resources that the CIP is going to have. You know, and I can get with Mr. Cusenberry and we can try to tighten up because I'm hearing the fourth middle, the fourth elementary school is off for a while, but we can look at some of the additions to the, to the preschool for administrative, for information, not to slow the project down, but to, you know, look at that. And then we can look at, you know, what resources are going to be needed for, to do the engineering, the design and all that kind of stuff. Because that is, that's, that's something that you might be able to commit to and, you know, if we have some existing resources or if we find out that we could get a grant and there's ways to do that. So I think that's what we needed to, was just the direction.
Okay. Okay. All right. That was the fun one, I think. A big one. So do we just want to either A, work down our spreadsheet or go through the slides? Because we have the project review, planning commission priorities for the, we already, we already approved the Vision Kama program, that, right? Let's go, let's try, I guess, at the top, actually. All right, Williams.
So this, I just wanted to bring back to your attention the memorandum that came from the planning commission to the board supervisors with their recommended priorities. Of course, the Kama, and you all decided and took vote at the last meeting to go ahead and fund that out of ARPA funds. Then they recommended the school bus replacement for the schools, the ambulance, as well as the fire and rescue facilities, fixing the concrete at Sealston Convenience Center, the middle school turn lane phase two, old courthouse renovation repurposing and IT computer replacement, as well as Barnesville Park playground replacement, Sealston Sports Complex access road repaving. And then, of course, you all have this at your station, so it's easier to read. But this was after I sent out the spreadsheet to you all, everybody sent their.
Recommendations.
Their recommendations, their rankings back. And I'd like to thank Ms. Fish for taking the time to put all of this together. I really appreciate that. And so this next slide is everything that you rated a one or a two, which I don't think there were any, the only one was the Kama and y'all already taken care of that. All of these that are on this is two. And one and two are your urgent projects. And so you've already been talking about the preschool replacement, you also, as a consensus, the school bus replacement, the middle school baseball softball scoreboard installation, the Potomac Elementary gym floor, flooring for all three elementary schools, for EMS, fire and rescue facilities, ambulance replacement, solid western recycling, the concrete repair, engineering repurpose, existing courthouse, engineering phase for the middle school turn lane phase two, parks and rec, replace Barnesville Playground, and IT computer replacement. So those are what you all decided are collectively the average was that came up as urgent projects. And so at this point, then, kind of talk a little bit about the funding. So as Mr. Laux mentioned in his presentation, there was like 2.8 that we put in the operating budget. Part of that 2.8 was, is going towards the existing debt service and another portion was set aside for the fire and rescue facilities. Right off the top, there's at least a million in project appropriations, probably some more there that I can spend a little bit more time now that we've gotten some of the other, the operating budgets and the service authority budget kind of out of the way. So I'm going to do a deep dive into what we have left over in certain projects and see what we can reallocate there. We only, after the 75,000 that was appropriated for the Kama, you have 264,424 remaining in the uncommitted ARPA funds, 2.9 in the prior funds that haven't been allocated. Any surplus, of course, this is availability subject to year end. One thing that I might mention here is if, say, if the schools were to have a surplus at the end of the year and their surplus and their revenues match up, that could be a way of adding to those funds for the preschool, engineering, architectural design, and then, of course, fund balance. But we've already tapped into that in the operating budget. And now we would like your direction. If you all want to have a discussion on the projects in front of you, do you want to go back to that list? Oh, I didn't, I missed taking that out. I'm sorry.
I think it'd be best to go back to the list so it's available for everyone to see. Mr. Collins?
This list?
I'm sorry, could you give us the spreadsheet list?
That.
I know it's hard to see, but that's what we have in front of us.
You have that in front of you, yeah.
Good, Mr. Collins.
So last meeting, we, we discussed about the carryover funds for the school being in the 700,000 range. And that I thought there was some interest to having Dr. Boyd come back and request to allocate those funds for these specific projects. Mr. Stonehill mentioned he didn't have a problem if they went for the specific projects that were listed in the CIP.
Would Dr. Boyd come up and speak to that?
Sure.
I know we're talking about a lot of moving pieces right now, a whole lot of moving pieces as far as the preschool and everything else, but certainly wouldn't have an issue with carrying over. I think the estimate was 731,000 when we were at the last meeting, somewhere in that ballpark.
I don't think I wrote it down.
And if you took a look at the projects, we had four that were listed as necessary that were, well, five total that were listed as necessary. I wasn't including the school bus replacement, that's at 650,000. Obviously, that's a, that's a high price tag and one that we probably couldn't afford with the carryover funds. However, the other remaining projects that are listed as necessary, King George Middle School baseball softball scoreboard installation, Potomac Elementary School floors, parking lots and driveways, and then the flooring replacement, that adds up to somewhere in the ballpark of about 400,000. So.
If I could caution, we, we still have not got done with their spending for this year. So the 731 is not a guarantee. There is certain money tied up in, that only can be used for school-related functions. We talked about that at the last meeting and that is.
I looked at the encumbered funds, what's, what's encumbered already. And there would, in my non-expert observation, there would be plenty of carryover money.
Well, last year, there was, in the, in the operating, they turned back 7, 769 or something like that. Or no, 679. That, but that's always a moving number until June 30th.
Well, actually until the audit.
Till the audit, okay. So I don't know, what I'm just saying is caution you on that. I'm not suggesting you can't use any excess funds. It's just, I don't know that it's going to be an exact amount of 731.
That's why, that's why I was only half pricing it. So, you know.
And the surplus funds, you cannot, so after everything is said and done through work sessions, I come before you and request to appropriate the funds because the audit is not complete, we cannot use the surplus funds until that is done. So if you, if that was your, the will of the board to wait until then to allocate for those, or appropriate for those other, for the school projects, that's something that we could certainly entertain. But again, that would be up to the five of you to make that decision.
So that's why I was talking about this now for our discussion for the board, to see what the will is. Not saying that they'll be there, but you can.
We, so if we want to move forward with, and say we're going to do those projects, we could earmark that dollar that's coming back from the schools and say, hey, that's going to go towards this or reimburse. And then we could still execute those projects with the existing funds that we have. And then the money would then come back in to, to replace it, which would essentially do the same thing. But, or otherwise, you do have to wait, as Ms. Hans said, until after the, the audit.
Yes, because that is a, it's an accounting issue that's, because if you went ahead and appropriated now.
I'm not talking about appropriating, I'm just talking about a gentleman's agreement with the board and the schools.
Yes.
That, that these objects, these ones here would, whatever carrier would pay for those and we wouldn't be putting them in tonight's discussion.
Then we couldn't set up a budget or anything and he couldn't move forward with his projects until that time.
That's correct. I don't think that's a problem. Was it, Dr. Boyd?
As far as, I, the audit took a long time last year. Would, I guess the question is.
There were, there were some issues there, so.
I mentioned they probably want to get some of these things done over the summer, like the school gym floor while.
That's what I was going to say, because there are some of those that you only can do at a certain time of the year. And I know there's some other things that you've thought about to use that 700,000 that would have come back to us eventually in the CIP, some good ideas. So maybe we can do some of the time-sensitive stuff in ours so, to make sure that it gets done. And then he can add those other projects on that are needed, you know, to cover the 700. Because like parking lot, you have to do that when the school's out, correct?
Sure, yeah. And the gym floor replacement, yeah, that, those would be time-sensitive. Yeah.
That's what I was getting at, that the ones that are time-sensitive.
Now, the other ones, we would have to include in the CIP in the next round, potentially?
So let's just go through to figure out which ones we're looking to approve. Let's go that way. So from the schools, I, everyone, I think, would be in favor of the school buses, right? I know we had a two there, but just to verify. And so the ones that were twos that, that Ms. Hunt had showed as recommendations to go forth with being funded, it also included the scoreboard installation, the school gym floor, and the flooring replacement at Potomac, Sealston, King George Elementary Schools. The parking lot driveways showed up as a three, so I don't believe those showed up on the list as recommended by staff based off our feedback. But I'll ask my colleagues if they would like to see that included as a project to be part of the CIP funded this year. I am in favor of having it funded, but I'll leave it to the rest of my colleagues to also weigh in and also the citizen advisors.
Are we looking at all these things here? Like, or just pick out some?
I'm looking at the spreadsheet.
Okay. I was just looking at the urgent project.
So they're, so it's not in the urgent project? I was making the assumption, anything that showed up as a one or two, everyone was amenable to moving forward with.
Well, why I ask is the flooring, i- is it possible to do all of the elementary schools at one time or, you know, in this short amount of time? That's my question. Because if I had to pick one.
We did a similar rendition last year with a different set of classrooms and tile. It ran us up through the beginning of the school year. So again, it's lining up contractors, making sure we have the materials. All those are variables that we can't necessarily account for tonight, but if we got the ball rolling, we would certainly have the summer right now to get a lot of it done.
Right. I asked that question because we had drummed, I would, I would pick Potomac to be the one because that's probably the oldest gym floor of all of the schools.
That, that's the only gym floor on there. The, the other flooring replacements.
Oh, just hallways?
Yeah, classrooms, hallways, libraries, main office areas.
That's why I asked that question, because it might be hard to do it all in this short amount of time.
So again, right now, the. So again, right now, the list does not include the parking lots and driveways. I'm just looking for a yes now.
I would hold off on that until we see some final numbers. I mean, at the end, if we can fit it in there, that's fine. But for now, I mean, I would hold off on it.
Okay. Wait, Mr. Collins? Okay, that's three to wait. So that we'll hold off on that one for the time being. But it was, I think a yes to the scoreboard, the gym floor, and the floor replacement, and then the school buses. So and preschool.
Understood.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Let's roll back up to the sheriff's office. We have the law enforcement patrol boat. It came out as a four. I'm going to bring this up because I am interested in seeing us move forward with this. Sheriff, would you mind coming up? If I recall properly, I just would like you to verify, but if I recall properly, there is grant funding that is available to cover, was it two thirds or was it three quarters? I couldn't remember.
Thirty-four percent. Well, King George is responsible for 34%.
So the grant would cover two thirds of it. And if we were not to move forward with the purchase this year, then that grant goes away, is my understanding?
2025, yes.
So if we choose not to move forward with it, and we want to move forward with it in a later date, either A, we'd have to reapply for a grant and hope we get it, or B, we'd have to pay for the full thing out of our dollars.
Yes.
Okay. So I would like to see us move that into being funded.
I agree. I think 34% of the 280,000 is.
About 90 something?
Yeah, is a small price to pay for being able to do that sooner rather than later.
I already agree if we can get the dog park.
Mr. Stonehill? I would, I mean, I would agree. It's, if we didn't have that grant, I might push it off a little bit, but I don't know. I don't know. We'll lose that opportunity for that grant.
Okay. Ms. Bender, do you want to weigh in?
I agree, but I agree with the dog park too, because I hear that from too many people.
We will come to it, I promise. Gentlemen, all right, okay. So I think we have a majority that would like to see the patrol boat included as part of the CIP approval for this year. We'll move to fire and rescue, I think. Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate it. The ambulances in the fire and rescue facility, I think, are yeses across the board. Yes. Okay. I think that's a pretty, pretty easy to come to. We have the aerial ladder truck apparatus. We have a six. I am not in favor of moving forward with it this year. Not that I don't think we have a need and based off Chief Moody's staff's input that it would take multiple years to show up. I appreciate that there's a challenge there. I just don't think we have the funds to commit towards that project this year, though. So I'll ask. Okay. Nope. Okay. Yeah. And if someone disagrees, please feel free to ring in or if you want to speak upon the topic, please chime in, anyone. Sealston Convenience Center Concrete Repair, that's a two. I think that is pretty, pretty solid that everyone would like to see that move forward. We have the Ralph Bunch School Ross Shop Roof at a five. It's pretty far down there. I'm going to hazard a guess. I'll let my colleagues speak up if they really like to see it move forward, but I think we're in agreement that that's not moving forward. The engineering costs associated with the relocation of the general properties is at a three, so that's close. My colleagues, where you stand on that? I think we should move forward with it.
I agree, because we're wasting money.
You think so? Okay. Yep. Okay. So I think we'd like to see the engineering costs associated with the relocation of general properties included. We'll move down. We'll talk to the dog park first. Okay, let's go to, we'll come back to engineering, although those are easy because I think we've already had those included as twos, unless someone has real heartburn and would like to speak in opposition of either the old courthouse renovation or the middle school turn lane phase two. Okay, we'll move on. And then in the parks and recreations, the only thing that we had that bubbled up high enough was the Barnesfield Playground Replacement. And I don't think Chris, oh, Chris Clark is here. Mr. Clark, you're always welcome to come up. So obviously, there, there's some danger there, I know, with, with that piece of equipment. And so that's the part of the reason for the request.
It has exceeded its useful life.
So I think we have a majority that would like to move forward with that. So let's work our way down. We'll start with dog park. It's at a four. So Mr. Collins, weigh in. Feel free.
So here's my argument on the dog park. So for I don't know how many years with the surveys out, dog, everybody wants a dog park. I mean, I don't care about a dog park. I don't, I wouldn't take my dog to a dog park, but that's, that's not what I'm here for. So everybody on these surveys want a dog park, so I would endorse a dog park.
I agree. I have heard from many constituents who ask, when are we going to get a dog park? Same thing. I don't know if I would use a dog park, but there's a lot of people that would like a dog park in King George.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have a site for the dog park or what is this $100,000 for?
At this time, we do not. The first proposed site that I came up with when I first got here four and a half years ago was some of the property around the sheriff's office so that animal control would also be able to keep eyes on it and help us on that way. I know the sheriff is not necessary with, on board with that. There would be future possibilities at Barnesfield and the Barnesfield property as we redevelop that, that would give us more room or after the closing of the Perkins Corner Waste Water Center. Right now, yeah, there is not a site picked out, and that's why it's down the road from staff's point of view.
I wasn't finished. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins. Thank you. So, so what does this $100,000 in here pay for realistically?
Fencing, hopefully a water station, any other changes we need to make to the facility, and then some apparatus.
But.
Playground type stuff.
But there, there, there's no site. So if we have to acquire a site and we have to do site work and engineering, wouldn't it be wiser to do that first than plug in $100,000 for fencing that we don't know where it's going? Do you get where I'm coming from? I don't understand.
I totally hear you. The plan is, was to put it on property that the county already owned. That's what the budget is for. Now that, but that property has not been decided by staff because it had, we haven't, it hasn't crept close enough to say, hey, now let's really dial in and say where we want to put it.
That's my only hesitation with this. I absolutely agree. There is a need. It comes up over and over again in the needs analysis and the surveys, and I see all kinds of chatter on social media about it and had to deal with an issue with dogs at Sealston, you know, a couple of years ago with some of the soccer leagues. So I see, I definitely agree. I see a need. I just, I think maybe some of us are looking at this as this is only going to cost $100,000, so I'm all in. That's not realistic here. So I would, if we wanted to do, if you could tell me that this $100,000 was for site work or engineering study or planning at a site that the county already owns, so we didn't also have to put in money for land acquisition, I'm good with that. But I'm not really hearing that.
No, and that's why, that's why we still have it out of here. It is not a priority to the department at this time.
You tell me that, that you couldn't carve out in one of the parks, especially Seidel Brooks Park. I went over there the other day to see if the dog park would fit in, fit in there. And it appears to me, and I'm not an expert in dog parks, but that you could carve out some of those areas, and even in Barnesfield, there's still a lot of territory. I don't know why you couldn't carve that out.
With Brooks Park, all the places that are open now are sports fields. So on a, typically in the winter, in the fall or the spring, on a Tuesday and Thursday night, almost every inch of that property is in use. We can't go further to the east because we hit the wetlands that way until we get all the way around to the wastewater center. To go up the hill where the old animal shelter is would be awkward and we would have to take down a lot of, lot of trees to get into there. And when we, we get real close to the property line to the YMCA.
Why are you poo-pooing my project?
I, I, I mean, we were just, we, I don't think we're at the point, in, in staff's opinion, it may, it probably will be a best thing to wrap into at this time into the Barnesville Master Plan, but we're not, I don't think we're there yet.
So right now, you showed the dog park for next year. Do you anticipate it would actually be ready to go next year?
If we have some other changes, hopefully we'll know where, you know, we have a better concept of where we can go.
Okay. I would struggle with moving forward with just setting aside the funds right now, but do we want to entertain trying to identify the property? Obviously, that's like the first piece, right? I mean, we need to figure out where it's going to go before we can really.
I agree with that. So it would make sense to do the Barnesville Park Wayside Park Master Plan to figure out what we're going to do with Barnesfield and Wayside when it's returned to us. So a dog park could be part of that. That would make sense to me. We have all this land that we acquired and it's just sitting there. And we're beginning Wayside Park back in September, correct? Around that time?
Somewhere, somewhere around Labor Day is their anticipated date.
Okay. So then let's roll back to the.
It could be in the wayside, so you could set the $100,000 in there because September's coming.
You're saying use Wayside Park? I don't know if that would be enough. I mean, dog parks can be pretty, pretty substantial amount of area. Like, if you go to the one at, like Duff, that's, that's a fair amount of acreage that they have for their.
At least six total acres, I think.
The one in Warsaw is small.
Which one?
The one in Warsaw is very small.
Yeah. And the hard part is if you build one small and you just have dogs of all sizes in the one area, you've got 100 and something pound golden retrievers with six pound Chihuahuas that don't really mix. And so best practice is to have a small dog and a large dog. And then so like in the case of Duff, they have a small dog, a large dog, and then a total free running area.
So this is the will of the people. And so I think we should make some movement in the, in that direction.
So let's circle back then to the Barnesfield Wayside Park Master Plan and Construction, because if that would be a location that could house it, let's see if there's a desire to move forward with that.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, I would agree. I don't know that a waterfront park that we own is, I don't know that having a dog park at a riverfront park is the best use of that property. So I could see, though, having a dog park at Barnesfield. So I, Barnesfield Park. So I would be in agreement to plugging in, this $100,000 you have down for Barnesfield right now is just for master plan, right? No construction. The construction would come later in the 2.1 and the two, the next couple of years. Okay. So I would be good with plugging in $100,000 for Barnesfield Park and Wayside Park Master Plan this year.
And so just to be clear.
With hopefully the goal.
For all four pieces of property down there, including the home.
Yeah. And, and hopefully the goal of citing a future dog park, potentially at Barnesfield Park. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Cupco is in favor of moving forward with that one to work our way towards the dog park. Ms. Bender is a yes for including that. Mr. Collins, I know you want to do the dog park like today. I don't think it's, I don't think that's feasible.
Okay.
Okay. So Mr. Collins, Mr. Stonehill, did you want to weigh in? I don't want to take away from your opportunity to.
I don't want to be barking about this dog park for too long, but it's, it's a, yeah, everybody has been asking for it. I would not go to it. But everybody has been asking, but if we don't have a place, I'm not going to waste $100,000 on fencing or whatever. But we have all that beautiful swampland that we got in a trade that's down there in the woods with all the mosquitoes and everything. So I think with the master plan, if we could fill in all the swampland and get rid of all the mosquitoes, that would be maybe a great spot for it. But I would be in favor of moving along with the master plan idea and that the dog park this year.
Okay. Gentlemen? If you don't want to weigh in, that's fine. I just want to give you the opportunity. It's been one of our more heated topics.
I agree with Mr. Stonehill. I mean, King George is a rural community, and now we're talking about dog parks. And Ms. Bender is talking about her constituents and Mr. Collins his. Are they, are they going to travel to Barnesfield? Are people going to go from a shallow district to Barnesfield to use a dog park? I don't know. But I mean, I'm sure some people would use it. You know, maybe we ought to, you know, think about, if we don't have enough property to have a dog, maybe we shouldn't have one.
So I actually disagree with you. I'm a dog owner. And so one of the things that I would say is currently I take my dogs to Maryland to let them run. And I run across King Georgians on the Maryland side. The other piece is while we're out there doing that, we're also spending money in Maryland. Why wouldn't we want to put that here, keep our money here in this county? Because dogs are like our kids. I don't have any human kids at home anymore, so I got my two. So, you know, that's my two cents. Oh, he ain't allowed to stay no more. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we had a majority that wanted to move forward with putting the master plan being funded. So I think we'll add that one in. I do think there are some challenges, though, as Sergeant Major mentioned, about some concerns about how much use it will get. It is not centrally located. It is a great place from the perspective of it is where we have land. So that is good. Good. Have to do the math with, with the 28 million for the preschool.
I have a quick question while we're waiting.
Sure.
And Dr. Boyd might have to help me answer this one. So the road repaving at Sealston, correct, that the road is in bad shape?
Very bad shape.
Well, my, why I'm asking Dr. Boyd is I, I know one thing was mentioned that buses kind of go over there is, is if this was funded, is there a way to make sure that the buses don't go there? Because, I mean, they're big vehicles. It's not the bus drivers, you know, they're just waiting. It's the huge vehicles on the road, kind of ways down the road that wasn't designed to have big vehicles.
Yes. So the update that we put in, that I worked with a vendor that we've been working with recently, was to enhance it. And so it will be five inches of total depth, which will be sufficient for the buses.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that it was accounted for.
Yeah.
So I was in favor of moving forward with the access road repaving. It is becoming very troublesome and it's eventually going to break up completely and become even probably more expensive at that point to redo the whole thing. But.
Mr. Chair, I'm also in favor of moving forward with that this year.
Okay. Ms. Bender, were you in favor or not in favor? I wasn't sure.
I was in favor. I was just wanting to make sure that if we do that, either we restrict the buses or now I hear it's going to be a stronger road. So that's all I was worried about is the road breaking down when we're going to pay to do it.
Mr. Collins? I agree, but I, if you, okay. Mr. Collins is opposed. Mr. Stonehill?
Can you get a balance yet?
Per perspective on that, the calls and the emails that I see actually all, most of them come through the school system. They're, it's either going through a school board member or through Dr. Boyd coming to me because it's the parents that are sitting there on it, waiting to pick up kids. For some reason, our athletes don't seem to mind. They'll just drive around it.
If we have enough, I would be in favor of it. And I'm just trying to get a figure.
No, that's a fair point. Fair point. So then that, I think, takes us through, so we can go through the whole thing. Trailways feasibility study. I know that Mr. Clark, oh, thank you. Was there a second page? Oh, I do have that.
There's two different versions, one with the back and one that's smaller with.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're good. I was really nervous like coming in this one. We missed it. I'm sorry, the trailways feasibility, I feel like everyone, not that it's, you know, it's just finding the funds. And I appreciate that you were trying to build it out and be like, let's set aside some. I just, you know, it's too much, I think, for all of our other needs going on. The Sealston Sports Complex, I'm opposed to. No, okay. If someone really is in favor, please speak up. I'm sorry, what? The playground, the Sealston Sports Complex playground.
I think it's needed, but we can wait.
Okay. We have the rec center, but that's back, pushed out to 2026. So I think we can take that one off pretty easily. Barnesfield Softball Lighting is, next year is, is where it's being projected at the moment. So unless someone. So unless someone really is, is like, can see that move forward, I, I think that makes sense. Same with Sealson Sports Complex Baseball Lighting has been pushed out. Is that?
That would be the last two fields.
Okay.
And those are intentionally out there so that we can reevaluate where we are after we do the master plan.
Okay. And then the Sedell Brooks Park was repaving was because we were waiting for the wastewater treatment plant to be decommissioned. It's not worth it to even do, otherwise it's going to get destroyed.
I would recommend doing it now.
But, but planning that it's a need at, once that does get decommissioned. Uh, and then we have the Sealston Sports Complex Access Repaving, which is where we're at now.
Sure.
So when I was, when I was a member of the school board, it came in front of us, the, um, they could get more money for the field if they had bleachers in the, where the school board is now. So they could get semi-pro, um, teams. It came in front of the board of supervisor once, but it, it never got any steam. So I was curious what that would cost because that would give you more revenue for your schools. Did, did anybody ever did a number on that, Dr. Boyd?
The high school, current high school?
High school. Yeah. So, so it could, it could accommodate the semi-pro folks that want to come there. That, um, it was a huge revenue generator. It just didn't have enough, um, bleachers and that would be the place to put the bleachers.
I know it was designed originally to have more bleachers.
We've been approached by, it was pre-pandemic by a semi-pro football team that I don't know that they actually made any money. And they wanted to use the pit at that point, um, but we have not heard from any of them since. I would be happy to work with Dr. Boyd's staff on projecting out what additional bleachers would be since we kind of both dabble in the same area.
I'd like to see what it would cost and, you know, we could put it into a CIP somewhere down the road, but at least you'll have some kind of, um, of vision. That's okay.
Sure.
Okay. So are we still getting? Okay. So we have two items left, uh, aside from the, the road paving. I, I think the computer replacement is a one. So I think that's a pretty easy one to figure out. But then we have the courthouse marquee, uh, marquee network equipment and the county admin parks and rec building recabling project, uh, which I know are both, uh, Mr. Dines's projects. I, I think we should move forward with them myself. So. Mr. Dines, would you be willing to come up and speak to those projects one more time for me? So there was the, the courthouse marquee, marquee network equipment. Was this all of it or is this? Cause I thought we had had this on here before for the courthouse.
We have it for the existing that we have.
Okay.
In our buildings now.
Okay.
This is for when the new courthouse is there, we'll need additional equipment that will be able to have a higher capacity since there will be 55,000 square foot of building and much more technology inside the building. More people coming through every day.
And what does that equipment do?
Oh, it's mainly firewall, network switches, wireless access points, cameras or internal IT things. But the actual construction has its own security cameras, so that's not included.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Bender.
Why was this not included in the initial? Cause we talked about that in the, in the design meetings. So it wasn't.
I'm sorry, that's coming from, from the, I mean, the security.
Well, why, here's my question is when we designed the courthouse, it was everything supposed to be included, but now this is not, wasn't thought about? Like, how did this get dropped?
Well, we're worried about the cost of things going up all the time. And so I put this placeholder in just in case we ran out of money that we could use for these types of IT things. And I needed to happen to my own supply to help the courthouse get what they needed.
But this wasn't in the original design?
For the courthouse?
The whole courthouse, yeah, it had a budget, but that part of the budget is not the same as it was two years ago.
Okay. That's all I'm trying to get at is that the cost of inflation has now made it, we possibly need this amount of money to finish the project.
Right. I just want to make sure we have extra because you always had to, you don't want the courthouse to open and all of a sudden, well, we didn't have enough money to do this because we ran out with all the other things. Cause it's all kind of included with the audio visual too.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted to make sure because I, I thought that was covered, but this is inflation.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then could you speak to the county admin parks and rec building recabling projects one more time?
Oh yeah. This was one that was really important a few years ago when that room leaked and we wanted to move everything upstairs and recable the building. And also for Chris Clark's Parks and Rec, they have a closet that they have all their network equipment in. And there's no circulation, no air conditioning or anything like that. So their building is growing inside, even though they don't have that much space. They use all the space they can. So we were going to recable that building as well. Now this place I have here is a hundred sixty thousand dollars. I don't think it will be that much, but I wasn't sure since the last quotes I got for this project were before, when the COVID happened. And so after that, you know, it kind of got wiped out and didn't have the money for anything but this magnitude. But so I, I kind of just guessed this. I haven't had anyone come through and do another official site survey to, to go over the costs. So I just kind of elevated those with the inflation that we have now.
Okay. So I'll ask my colleagues how you feel. I think the courthouse marquee network equipment should be done. Ms. Bender's a yes. Ms. Cupco, Mr. Stonehill's a yes. Mr. Collins, you want to weigh in or? Uh, and then the county admin parks and rec building recabling project.
My only concern is where our total is.
I know. That's.
Cause I would agree with all of these, but.
So to recap, you wanted to move forward with the boat, the 34%.
Correct.
Of course, we have to put the full.
We do, yes.
Two hundred and eighty.
And then it would be reimbursed to the county, which would then go back into that fund.
And then for the schools, you wanted the buses.
Correct.
The scoreboard, the gym floor and the other floors.
Correct.
The Sealston concrete repair.
Correct.
General properties, the engineering costs for the, um, new building.
Correct.
The ambulance, uh, replacement for fire and rescue. And now of course the other was the fire and rescue facilities, which is, I'm not including in this total because.
We have already procured.
Either, either they're doing a bond or they're working on grants as well.
Yep.
Then, um, for engineering, the turn lane, um, for the second turn lane at the middle school, the, um, repurposing of the.
Courthouse.
Courthouse. For parks and rec, we had the master plan and the playground replacement and Sealston Road. And.
The Sealson Sports Complex access road? So you said, so.
Yeah.
Well, uh, there was, I was just trying to figure out, uh, I think Mr. Stonehill was, wanted to know what the, uh, the, the total tab was at the moment at, with those that we have. And, and the computer replacement, because that was a one. So that would get us everything except I think the Sealson Sports Complex Road repaving, the marquee and then the recabling project.
So without the, without the Sealston, the marquee and the recabling, it's three million sixty seven thousand, four hundred and fifty two dollars.
Okay.
And I've identified in that other slide, um, six point one million, um, possible.
Did that include funds coming back from the schools?
No.
Okay.
Because we don't know that.
I understand. I would just want to make sure that.
And this total does not include whatever those engineering costs would be for the preschool.
Understood. So I'll, let's go back to the Sealson Sports Complex access road repaving. I'll ask my, my colleague, I, I would still like to move forward with this.
I agree.
Okay. 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 Fair enough.
And I would agree with all three of the IT projects.
So the, the marquee, I'm, I'm, I think we had a majority do already, but just to rehash. Okay. And then the reca, recabling? I was also in favor of at the, um, rec center. So yes, we would, we'd like to add the, both the marquee, the recabling and the, for the IT and as well as the Sealston Sports Complex access road repaving.
So on the marquee, he had it split between two years. He had, um, if I'm looking at this correct, he had a hundred for this year and 50 for the next year. So is it just the hundred or is it the whole hundred and fifty?
Let's do the hundred right now. My understanding is Mr. Dines was kind of putting this in and kind of as a placeholder so that money, some of it could come back possibly. We'll see, right? This is just, this is contingency kind of to make sure that the courthouse is in a good space.
Yeah. The 50 was for after they moved in and we found out that we needed something extra, but not that was pressing, but we could just wait to do it.
The other thing is, is that as part of this, um, we're working right now with the, um, I guess the subcontractors and, and the state Supreme Court on the audio visual for the courthouse and the requirements. We could discuss the possibility of the funding that's still available for this, correct? For the marquee.
Well, I think they had kind of split that off, but yes.
I think we, we bring it back to them. I'm just saying that I would put it in. I mean, I would, we would recommend you put it in and then you might not end up having to expend it out of the CIP. It could be spent out of the current, uh, contract for the courthouse.
Okay.
So, and those projects in it's three million, four hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and fifty two.
Well, that's my, it's a big number, I know, but. Four hundred and.
Three million, four hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and fifty two dollars.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything else they would like to weigh in on? Oh, Ms. Bender, you did have a question. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I have a question on the stud, engineering study on the current courthouse. That is going to includes a total mold, like even if we have to gut the building, correct?
So that is from my understanding, did Mr. Young leave? The, um, this is for the engineering piece of it, not for the actual work. This is just for the engineering.
Right. Well, my concern is what are we engineering? Like, we haven't even seen any survey that's, right. But what I'm getting at is who's deciding what the space is. Where my original thought was we were supposed to get a survey back about the condition of the building and what needed to be done. So why is there already decisions being made on the building without us even seeing anything? That's my question.
So I believe that it was for the development of a future budget as to what you would be looking at if you did those kind of things. So the, the only CIP project is the study. You're going to have to come back next year as a new CIP project to deal with whatever you're going to do with the, the existing courthouse. And, you know, so all that can come.
This, this money here for the courthouse renovation, repurposing is not.
No, we've already, we already allocated money for a study.
The study has been.
The study, I guess, because there, Ms. Bender's asking about the results of that study.
Right. But I'm, isn't, wait a minute, let me find it in here. Mr. Granger, have, isn't it in here?
Which one?
Sorry, I might, wait a minute, hold on.
The study was in a previous, um, CIP.
Okay. Never mind. I was just hearing two things.
Moving forward would be as a placeholder.
So it's just a placeholder.
Yeah. So once we're, you know, the results of the study to move forward with the, the engineering.
Sorry, I misunderstood. I thought.
So no decisions have been made about what offices would be moving over, what would be done. Nothing has been made. It's the, the architects have just done the study and kind of like configured, here's options. If you wanted to move this department over, you move this department over. These are the kind of roughly the square footages that would fit in that building based on what the needs.
So it is coming is what I'm hearing.
Yes. I mean, Mr. Mr. Young came in at the right time. Could you approach the podium, Mr. Young? Sorry to hit you. And, and it's, and really, um, and he may have to defer to Mr. Cusenberry because Mr. Cusenberry is the one who's been working on this project. The middle, the, the existing courthouse and middle school repurposing study, our, our anticipation was we thought they were going to be ready to go in May. And I don't know what the holdup is and I can ask Mr. Cusenberry, but the, nothing's been made in terms of like this office is going here or anything like that. It's just, we're just figuring out kind of the scenarios that are available and then the board will get the final study.
We are figuring out what we will need, truly the space each department would need segregated off. That way we can figure out how to make the future space not only fit our current needs, but our needs in the future. So that comes with quite a bit of studying of how each department we see growing and, uh, how we could segregate the different departments and group them together with who they work with most.
So if the study comes back and there's a recommendation that a portion of the courthouse should be demoed, because it's just not feasible to, to move forward with keeping it. Is that being considered currently or is it even being entertained? Or is the anticipation the whole building will be usable after work is done on it to mitigate any of the challenges it's currently having?
I believe we are planning on using the whole building.
Okay.
And just designing in such a way that we can grow into it instead of just short term. And I mean, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to go through the expense of tearing down something to build it back later on. Eventually we will need the square footage, I believe.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying along the line, like looking at, at the old middle school at this point, I think the answer is tear it down. And you'd have to build something back again.
And that was the recommendation that they have too, is that they just indicated that they looked at that building, is their ability to gut it, keep the walls, keep the structural, and they just said, no.
But the courthouse has been expanded three times, four times? So that's why I was wondering, like, is there a portion that was expanded maybe? And it wasn't as high of a caliber? And that's why I kind of was asking about possibility of needing demo of a portion of it, if it just isn't feasible.
Yeah. For the, I was referring to the courthouse with that last statement.
Fair enough.
And we have not looked into that yet.
Okay.
Why don't I just suggest to Mr. Cusenberry that we get them scheduled? I know he has been in contact with Mr. Mr. Bell about, you know, getting this before you all. And, and so we can get this in the next couple of meetings as a work session or a, not a work session, a presentation.
Well, I'd appreciate that because, I mean, I've been pretty vocal about it. I don't know what, I'm hearing that it's not being done the way that we talked about is that we first, there's a mold issue in that building. So first we need to identify what's the issue and how you mitigate it and what you do with the hazmat. So designing and wasting money on surveys and studies of all our needs and what in a building, we don't even know what the building, how do we remediate? Do we have to get rid of parts of it because there's an issue that we can't solve? It just doesn't make sense. That's why I've brought it up because it's concerning me that we're making all these plans and thinking about something before we figure out how to address the mold. Cause that needs to be taken care of. And I will be a bear about that for the next two years that we need to figure out why the mold occurs and how to mediate and not just put a Band-Aid on it like we've done in the past.
Well, um, I can, I can check with, with Mr. Cusenberry, but I'd know that you did address a project in a year and a half ago, when we did the parking lot, they also did some work to change the drainage over there that they felt was the cause of some of that mold possibility. So I, I, but I will get with him and we'll get an update to you on that. I understand your points definitely. But I, I just want to re-stress, no one's changing offices at this point. And I haven't, I haven't decided, you know, from the standpoint of we all need to be moving over there or that this is going to be a place. That's not what, when you hear that we're doing that, it's more about space utilization. What's the capability, I think, would be the.
So, but I think the.
And I agree with you. We can, we can find out. I will find out about the mold situation. If that's something that still needs to be addressed, then yes, we will make sure that no one's going to go in there if there's mold. No. Absolutely.
Okay. Do anyone else have any other questions or comments? Do you guys have any other questions or comments? Okay. I think that wraps up our board discussion.
So then that list that we just put together is what you want me to come back at a future board meeting. Probably in the July meeting after we approve the operating budget. Because funding for this is in that operating budget, so we.
Need to wait. Yep.
That's my suggestion, unless you want me to bring it that same night or wait till July.
I think we'll wait till July. We're going to head on the CIP as it is, not waiting until September to start it. So I think it'll be okay to wait till July to approve it, once we've approved the, the county fiscal year budget.
So then I'll, I'll get to work on the, the funding solution to bring forward to you at that meeting.
Okay. Okay, does anyone else have anything else to bring for the board? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion. Do we have any other work sessions? I feel like we always have work sessions. Is it actually to June twenty? Nope, nope.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to June twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM in the boardroom.
Second.
All right, we have a motion probably second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair, both aye. Motion carries, we're adjourned.